Seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the Dunbar. Selectment meeting for Thursday, May 28th. Full board of selectmen here today, town administrator. And Leo is recording the meeting minutes. For those of you that want to view them online. Let's go over the whole business and the meeting minutes here.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of the May 14th. Meeting hasn't ended.
Second. Motion been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Lee, I appreciate you going through these minutes. I know there were quite a few changes in here this week.
Must see.
While he's signing that, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. If you're not on the agenda and you wanna make any public comment, now would be the time. Anything for now, Leo?
Nope. I'll let these people do their business.
Okay, we'll do it again at the end of the meeting, so that's taken care of. So we're gonna go to the first item on the agenda. We have a member from the Dunbar Elementary School wants to do a time capsule request. Caleb Hartford, is that it? To speak on the subject accompanied by Owen Harrington, DES principal. Lynn Oliver, Laura Ruthier, and Clem Mann. Okay. Go ahead. We do have a copy of your letter that you sent me, by the way.
Just read it. Just read it. It's okay. They don't bite. It's okay. Just read it.
I, Caleb Hartford, am proposing to the selectmen, selectmen of Dunbar and New Hampshire, a historical time capsule event for DES year 2020. DES time capsule 2020 materials. Time capsule.
Materials you will need.
Material you will need. Time cap- time capsule activity packet from Mrs. Ruthier. Fill, filled, filled out. Nice and neat. Students and.
All the students and staff. This is it? Mrs. Ruthier? All the students and staff could fill that out. Okay? And?
Put, put it in. Put it in the envelope and sealed with name of student and staff. One 2019 to 2020 year book. One strongbox. One, one plaque to lay on the ground when.
Where?
When. I'm going where, where the, where the time capsule is buried. Reading D, reading DES 2020. On June 12th, when the students. On June 12th, when the students. When the students come, come, come through, each student and staff can put their time capsule envelope into, into the strongbox. When, when all the students and staff envo- and when all the students and staff's envelopes are in the time capsule, Mr. Harrington can lay 2019 to 2020 DES year book on top of the envelope. On top of the envelopes in the, in the time capsule. Then we, then we could have, have a certain time where everyone can, can read back at the common to observe Mr. To ob-
Observe.
To observe Mr. Harrington. To observe, to observe Mr. Harrington laid the time capsule. And I, Caleb Hartford, would like to do the honor putting the first several of, of, of the time capsule.
That idea.
Once the time capsule is buried, the DES 2020 plaque can be, can be laid on, on top to mark, to, to mark the time capsule. This time capsule will, will mark a historical DES year of 2020. The time capsule shall be opened in 20 years, in the year 2040. The key, the key for the strongbox will be held, held at the town hall. This is what the plaque would look like.
Oh, nice. And do we have a yearbook for it?
There will be.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the other, the other part of this stuff is funding, because I didn't realize how much time capsules cost, and they're expensive. Upwards four, five hundred dollars for decent ones that are gonna keep everyone safe. We have access to a grant from a local insurance company. They write grants for us, so we'd be able to use that. And the plaque itself, we've looked into that, and I think, other than that, the school would cover anything else that would be covered cost-wise. So I think we would be looking at maybe, maybe a hundred dollars out of pocket from the school. I think the other part of it is that Caleb had felt that it would be best to be in the town common, so that's why we're here today. But we're also here today because it's really excellent opportunity for Caleb to see how kinda the town government system works, so.
Yep.
Oh, WNYC is gonna be there too.
They may. I'm, I'm grateful for his prayer and he's gonna pitch it to them to cover the salary.
Oh, great. Well Caleb, how your select board works is one selectman gets elected in our town meeting every year. And so we're on a three-year rotating shift. One select person becomes chair, normally after they're here for a while and they, they've learned the ropes. So I just got elected this year. Mike was elected last year. Bob was.
Nope, I passed.
Bob was gonna select one twice now and then.
I like to be able to criticize.
So what do our selectmen think about this idea? Do you have any problem with putting a time capsule in the lawn on the?
I just wanna know, how deep is, how deep would I put it? Above?
Depending on how big the strongbox is. Shouldn't be too big. It's only embossed with one yearbook, right? So it shouldn't be anything too big.
Just embossed? Are there any other goodies in there?
Milk. No, we're just gonna be. No trade. Yes, it's just gonna be what Mrs. Ruthier actually gave all the children. And she did this before we even, you know, discussed what we're doing. And they fill it out, and it's their personal feelings of how this year, how they feel about themselves, of what happened this year.
Great.
Yeah.
I remember when I was in high school, we opened up in high school, it was about, it was about 20 years earlier, they, they buried one. What my favorite was, we had Coca-Cola from the 60s.
Oh, still filled?
Still filled and looking good. And so I think it's, and I think it's more precious of the notes that you leave.
Right.
For the future. I think that would be very.
Names on it and how they feel.
Now, you're gonna be, you have to guarantee you're gonna be here in 20 years, right? You're gonna be here in 20 years, open it?
Maybe.
Okay.
We already said I probably won't be, but you will, right?
The only other thing we're gonna think about is make sure to stay away from some construction areas. I think we may try and do something with the steps next year in the front that are crumbling, and then on the backside. So I think anywhere here that's not near the tree roots, I think we could try and.
We do have a septic design on, in the office that might be up old.
But it would be more near the, near Caleb's statue? Is that what you're thinking?
Near the statue? That's what he, yeah.
Wouldn't that be appropriate?
That's what he was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that would.
I don't think there's anything on the triangle.
And then, you know, he, the only thing is, is um, he was hoping that, you know, that it's been a hard year for everybody, especially the kids. And I think it would be great if it could actually be done on June 12th, at least put into the ground. So the kids can be in their vehicles around and watch them actually put it in the ground, and it'll give them hope for this year.
And will you guys have that time capsule?
I, I have, I can't guarantee that we will. We have to order it and ask to get here, so, yeah.
Leo, you got a question?
Yep, just a comment. You might wanna make sure you coordinate with the police chief because with that room, you know, with that triangle there, you know?
Oh, because of the traffic?
Yeah, the traffic, you know?
I think that's a good spot for it. I know that on the opposite side where we lost a maple tree, where we've been trying to work the last few years with the town forestry to put a new tree in there. So.
He actually wanted it near the statue.
He wanted what?
He wanted it near the statue.
Oh, perfect.
The little plaque on the ground. DES 2020 at the statue.
I don't have any issue with it. Bob, you have anything?
I don't see a problem, you know? It probably gives the kids this year something to look forward to.
Yeah. It's very hard for them, right? Like, something really, I think they could actually put this up the code to, and it'll always be there for the next 20 years, you know?
Yep.
So.
I have one question. I know when the pastor board has been hesitant in putting things in the ground in the common because there are too many things sticking up that will interfere with trip hazards and stuff like that, so. If, that, that sounds like a great location, the triangle.
Yeah, it is. I think of the flush to the ground, the plaque.
Plaque or flush to the?
Yeah, so it can be mowed right over.
Okay, that should work. All right, yeah.
So what I'd like to have is a paper that would just be inscribed in, and yeah, you could have it just completely flushed.
Oh, that's not a bad idea.
I really wanna say time capsules, so when 20 years later, you remember what's over there.
Yeah, and the key, the key to the, to the capsule itself will be left at the town hall. And that way in 20 years, whoever comes back, you know, and they, I guess we'd advertise it in the paper or whatever, we're opening it up. You know, and the key will stay there for 20, until you get 2040.
Yeah, keeper of records can take care of that, absolutely.
Yeah, well, we should have a backup key just in case. In between changeovers.
Ryan said it would be in the year's time.
Yep. Right, right under Caleb.
I'm also with that.
Leo, you had it?
Excuse me, no.
Mike, why don't we just make a quick motion on the subject?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Dunbar Elementary School time capsule request and to have it put in the town common adjacent to Caleb's statue in that vicinity. Exact location and time of placement to determine as soon as the logistics make, make it, make it so.
Can I ask you something? That's called Caleb statue?
Yeah.
Yep.
Why? I don't know. I really don't.
Caleb Stark.
Caleb Stark.
Caleb Stark, yeah, it's his son.
Okay. Okay, okay.
John Stark was a revolutionary war officer. His, his son ran away when the bunker hill started. He said, stay home. And Caleb said, as most young children say, go palm saying that, I'm on the bunker hill. And so.
I just find it ironic. I didn't know it was Caleb's statue. I didn't know.
And so it honors the son who basically survived bunker hill and was a hero of bunker hill.
No kidding. Thank you. Say that, huh?
So, then I'll make a second.
Okay. Motion been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, looks like you guys have your time capsule.
What do you say?
Caleb, don't ever forget that.
And I think I would just only ask that the school quit ink with us in the police department as we, when we get closer to a timeframe, logistics bear out the.
So if you can make it work on the 12th, that does make a lot of sense, because we have our end of the year period.
Right.
So, but it all depends on shipping.
Yes.
You know, and it may be something where you could still set it up like it's getting done and then put it in the true time capsule, you know, two days after.
There you go, that's a good.
Can I have the.
Can you throw that, can you, can you throw that first?
He can dig the hole and throw it on.
You can dig the hole for it too.
All right, well, thank you for coming in, young man.
What do you say?
Thank you.
Everybody else?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you guys for coming in to support him, and anybody else have any more questions for the select board now that you're here? Mowing's been okay at the school?
It hasn't had it, actually. I just dropped it.
No mowing at all?
Doesn't look like it's happened in the last.
Lee, did we call Mike and check on that?
Right.
He could probably do it during the day since we're not using.
Yeah, no, I mean, I was, I was looking at the town common to see if he'd moved over here, and it looks like it's not, but it hasn't been.
Okay. All right, we'll have Lee follow up on that with him. Any other issues over there we need to work on?
No. We're, I mean, the last day of remote learnings.
How about that tree issue?
I know.
Is that the result?
I'm all done teaching.
No, but there's some stuff going on with.
Ken and the garden club.
Yeah, the garden club's looking at it. I think we can get all of it done at the same time.
Oh, okay.
I'm just curious.
No, I can play.
I'm all done teaching.
Yeah, after that, they have two, oh, two weeks.
Actually, we did, we did, we did well.
Last day of school.
I know.
Celebrations, transitions, and assessments.
Okay, I guess we're gonna go on to our agenda. Thank you guys all for coming.
Thank you very much. What do you say?
We'd get up and shake a hand.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that he does, but no.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think cockies.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Hi, Lee.
Good job.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, we're gonna review to possibly accept the construction contract proposal from Connession Construction. I think you guys have all looked at this and reviewed it. Jeff Trexler has reviewed it, made a couple of small changes. Putting the date and general requirements from his plans. You giving this to Bob?
Is that the one you're agreeing?
Yep. And I'm okay with Jeff's changes. It's just notifying his structural plans. And I looked at the insurance limits, and I looked back at our notes. And I think that all of these meet or exceed our limits that we had reviewed with the town attorney. So what I'd like to do is make a motion to accept this. This bid form. With the proposed changes on here, we'll send it back to CCI Construction and have them make those changes. But what I'd like to do is make the motion pending those.
Approval of the changes?
Yes. Would you like to make a motion, Mike, if you have a copy of any hand?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the contract proposal from CCI as, as, with contingent upon the changes proposed may be made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd just like to make an amendment to that motion, just to make sure Jeff Trexler has not finished his review. Just to make sure that Jeff has reviewed it and it's completed.
I thought he did.
He didn't finish it. He said he's.
Oh, okay.
Make recommendations.
I think it was the steel that was remaining.
Yep. So motion's been made, seconded, and all approved and stated aye, so the motion passes. So Lee, we'll just send that back to them now? You have it as me mail the highlight parts?
Yeah.
Awesome. Just to let everybody know, they're gonna start, start on June 22nd, and they hope to be finished by July 14th. So that's great to hear. I did email Margaret this week and let them know that, you know, we had accepted a bid proposal, and it should go very quickly.
We also ask Lee to send dates to the library director?
Yeah, that would be a great idea.
I'd be mighty hearted, yeah.
Can you CC Margaret on the timeframe on that cover sheet? Just put a note, Dave asked me to send this to you.
Yeah.
Showing the timeline. I think that they'll be very happy to see that something is actually gonna start being worked on in that building.
Jumped the majority, it's great.
I'm gonna meet Jeff Trexler on the job site meetings there, and I'll make sure to notify him about pulling that additional steel down as well, so we can get it over to that. Town shed during that. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the personnel policy amendment. Travel allowance. What we're doing tonight is approving the wording Bob and Lee had worked on. And we did add in the 40 hour per week allowance as well. And they're making it retroactive, right?
April 1st.
April 1st, yes. I didn't have any problem with the wording. I went through it. It seemed to be worded okay. Seems simple enough that we could process it properly.
Yeah.
You're okay with that? Bob, I think you helped out. So I'm gonna go ahead and sign this. Send it over to you, Mike. So again, we made the motion already, and we're just approving the wording on there. So I think most people know about it in your department, right?
Yes.
Woody, thank you.
Thank you.
And did you get some positive review back from them as far as?
For the most part, I think they're still a little taken back. You know, there's, there's a lot going on right now, so.
Right.
Let them kind of be focused on one. They do appreciate it. I was expressed that, but there's just a lot of stuff going on right now that's kind of been taking their focus a little more, but they do appreciate it.
Right. And the next thing we have is on non-publics, we're gonna skip that for now. And we're gonna go right to mailbox items. And here and there, Woody, so we'll just use, take care of your department at the same time. Okay, gentlemen, we have a building department update. I think most of you have seen this new one.
Yes. I did flag something that she wants to make sure you guys are aware of, like a patch or.
Yes, I hope.
Mike's gonna bring it up.
Okay.
The first thing on this building planning and zoning update is the Botnick property. The Botnicks have installed their curb that they needed on the property. They didn't wanna have to bring their engineer back in to inspect it, because it's a pretty basic curb.
BURB.
BURB, curb, BURB. And Jeff Crosby had stopped by to see it, I believe. The building inspector here has seen it, looked at it, and said it was fine. At this point, the building inspector recommends that the project be summarized and closed out, allowing the issue of the certificate of occupancy of use. And I think that as a board, Mike's given us a lot of background on this, we should give him consensus from the board that it's okay to do it at this point. The project's been pending for a long time, and it was a small BURB, and if you go by and look at it, there's not much of a need to have an independent engineer come up and look at it.
I think Mr. Botnick has done a yeoman's job of trying to comply. He had a few change orders along the way.
Yeah.
Not due to any fault of anyone in this building department, but I'd like to go with Mike, the building inspector's recommendation of just approving it and issuing a certificate of use by consensus.
I don't have a problem either. I mean, I concur with what Jeff and the building inspector looked at and approved.
So Lee, can we send Donna an email tomorrow morning, giving our consensus to, go ahead and get that?
Closed.
Okay, the next thing was the complaint on some vehicles on Tenny Hill Road. Again, they're moving, registering the remaining vehicles, and that's in process still. And they are also working on plans to complete the construction on the building that started several years ago. Town solar system. Woody has some issue with a few things, some curbing out there and some barriers near the electrical trench. And Dana Lavoy's been made aware of it, Granite State Solar's been made aware of it. And they're working on those changes that need to be done through Woody. Gorman Pond continues to be an issue where there's small lots down there. Systems, septic systems are encroaching on rights of ways, and there's some overhanging dimensions on a corner lot down there. That area probably will always have this issue because the lots were so small in the original development. And that's something they're always gonna have to work with. There's a COVID-19 update on here, and as Mike may have mentioned earlier tonight, the governor has just extended his stay at home order till the middle of June. They're gonna check on it every two weeks. So we'll follow through with all of our departments, I think, until that time as well, and keep everything in process that we have going on. And I think that's it for their update. There's a note on the back talking about the solar array and, and working on that too. The next thing that we have here is our town welfare director has stated that we have a couple of new pending cases that may or may not be accepted, so. It's good to have an update from her to know, because we've held some money aside that could be used by her if need be.
I did notify her of that.
So that's good. Woody, we have a transfer station update from you. Apparently, we had another person down there arguing this weekend about certain aspects of your process. And now we've got the police doing kind of a drive-through and checking on you, and that seems to be helping things out, I think, having the presence of.
Yeah, I think so. People kind of calm down when they see.
Yep.
Officer Joe Millet, he made, after the first incident happened Saturday morning, he made himself a little more present down there. I pass that on to the chief. The chief's gonna pass on, it's gonna be a different person doing the shift this week, and he's gonna pass it on to make that part of a routine check. So you have a more presence there. Just keep, keep honest people honest.
Right, and Joe actually stepped in on one before it escalated. It happened right there.
I don't understand the problem.
Well, everything is, tensions are high. I mean, you read the news.
Stress.
The news says we're not gonna die, and the other news says there's no problems, and so what do you believe?
But everybody's going into the same stress, so be able to understand.
A grain of salt, and we just take it easy and take a calm attitude, but these guys, the workers of the transfer station, these are just, they're just implementing what they're told to do. It is not, they should be cast out down there. There's no need for that.
I mean, every time I've gone through Knockon, it's been fairly empty. I've been able to go, you know, partway through the day. I went fairly late this week, and it was still very, the flow was great.
I think for those residents listening, that if you can go during the week, the week is, the Saturday is crazy sometimes, but we are open two days during the weekend. It works out really well.
All I can see is they're doing a really good job. I have no complaints.
And even with recycling being open part, partway, and they're still able to keep the flow going, I think that, I take my hat off to them, guys, they're really doing a good job stepping up to it. Woody, as part of your thing here, we do have an update that. Woody, as part of your thing here, we do have an update that the demo lost revenue was six thousand thirty-eight dollars as of five twenty-eight. Lean and I discussed this this week, lost revenue is not part of the amount of money that we can uh, recapture from this COVID nineteen uh, money that's coming back to us. But what we can do is any increase of, of the tonnage that's going into your regular trash, uh, we can recoup on that because we hadn't planned for that in our budget.
Correct.
Okay, so, you can't do any lost revenues, but this isn't lost revenues because we've had to change the way we source our, our material out. So, what we did is we compared your tonnages this year to your tonnages last year, and we've taken your calculation that we pay per ton and we've done that math out and Lean and I went through it this week and.
We added another fourteen hundred to the claim though.
To our claim, so, you know, part of this, if it's labeled as lost revenue, we won't be able to do.
Right.
But when we can see that we've had to make changes because of COVID nineteen, those are able to be recovered.
Yeah, I just, I give you that so that you can see.
Right.
You know, what's, you, you only can, right now, you only see what's going out.
Yeah.
You don't see what's not, actually not coming in.
Right.
So, I, so I just give you that update so you see what's.
No, and I'm glad you do, I think the list you give us really helps us as select board to look at it during the week and see how things are going down there. Um, you know, you have notes in here about the building inspector coming down, you guys talk with the solar panel?
Yes, yeah, I spoke with Mike and he uh, he was looking at that burm that he put in and he made some adjustments and he's gonna contact them, they're gonna change the way it is. And I was in agreeance with what he wants to do, I'm like, yeah, that's perfect.
And last week, Woody and I talked about having the ability when it does get busy to um, use both lanes and have one car pull over. It is kind of odd to try and explain to somebody how to pull over in front of that dumpster and use it, but he has used it.
Yes.
When he's had to and then gone back to just the single, the single lane, so he's got that ability to keep it flowing down there, which was nice to see. And I, the, the other thing that I think is nice to see is that you're taking the employees' temperatures before and after the shifts.
Right.
So.
And I have a, I have a record of it, you know?
Yeah.
For whatever.
That's Spike on the darn those altercations.
Do you have anything you wanna update the board with other than this list, Woody?
How about the Bow?
There, um, I've spoken to the owner of Bow, Stan, um, zero waste. Business as usual right now.
They had the big fire at Bow.
Yeah.
It's a little bit longer wait times, but they're doing the best they can with what they have, so.
Just for the public, Woody, just give an explanation, how the fire at the.
At the Bow Recycling Center, which is where we take our municipal solid waste, our trash.
Yeah.
Sunday night, they had a major fire in their storage building, where they store all the trash, their equipment and stuff was in there, so. They're kind of regrouping and still running with both feet on the ground, so.
And for the record, I just wanna point out that Woody was the first responder, for Dunbar responded to that fire along with many other fire departments, thank you, Woody.
We sent a couple trucks over.
Anything else from your department, Woody?
Other than, this is the first, I heard that the governor extended it out two weeks, so do we wanna not, wanna wait a couple of weeks before we try and take more material, how do we wanna?
I think we better, because uh, it would get a little too complicated down there, just try and start offloading refrigerators and stoves.
My thought was, just to keep this for future thought, is that what, however we perceive forward, that we baby step it. You know, say for instance, we start taking paper, we do it for a couple of weeks, get the big influx of paper out of the way, get back to your normal amount of paper, then you could phase in plastic, get the big rush of uh, plastic out of there, then you'd be back to normal at that point, when you were taking plastic, you would have to load cardboard directly to the veil, you wouldn't be able to hang on to it, there'd just be no space to hang on to it.
I would be in agreement if you want, if you think you can handle paper, if you want to start the paper process now.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to hold off on the plastics, cause it stays on there so long, and I'd like to hold off on the refrigerators and appliances only, cause I don't see the way the traffic can work.
No, that's definitely not a, and at that point, you're gonna have the exchange of money.
Right.
Uh, the other question that we've been asked, um, thoughts on waste oil? People wanna get rid of their used motor oils, there's still kind of an interaction there, um, what's your thoughts?
Do you know?
Yeah, we take waste oil.
Oh, I didn't know you do.
You have a two hundred and fifty gallon tank.
Is it movable?
The tank's rollable, but here's the thing, you don't want the residents loading that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Cause if it gets contaminated with gasoline or antifreeze or water.
Okay, yeah.
Then if, when they come and pump it, they test it and it goes under a whole new category and then it starts costing where right now, they pump it for free.
Okay.
Why don't um, why don't we wait the two weeks on that one?
Okay.
But if you wanna start paper, I'm good with that.
The thing is, I, I, I like your idea of stepping it up slowly.
Yeah, I don't wanna, cause I think what's gonna happen is you're gonna have a big, you say, okay, for instance, say Tuesday when it's not paper, you're gonna have a big rush of paper.
Yeah.
And you're not gonna be able to take anything else.
Why don't we do the paper to start with, that'll be something small and help them get some of the stuff out?
So, my thought is, we were kind of short notice, we had planned for the following, not this Tuesday.
Yeah.
But the second Tuesday in, in June, whatever that may be.
You have to notify people the same way you did the last one.
Right, we'll get it out, get it on the information out and we can start paper then.
Have there been a lot of people recycling?
Yeah, it's actually stepped up, we're doing, we have those big Gaylord boxes. On a Saturday, we fill ten to twelve of them with cardboard. During the week, we're filling eight, sometimes ten.
The good news is that takes it out of the costly uh, regular line of trash, yeah, so.
You know, and, and people, you know, they still have the option, they're still throwing some away, which is fine, you know? Whatever you feel comfortable with, you do.
Yeah.
That's the way we're kind of looking at it.
Okay. Well, thanks for the updates, Woody, I really appreciate those emails, they really helped us.
There was one thing I wanted to ask, about the truck funds. Did you wanna have, you needed some more money in your budget, we talked about truck funds earlier.
I know we talked at one point, when it, when it sold, there was a possibility we'd come back. I'd like to get, looking to get a lift gate on that truck.
I thought we had already agreed that was going back to his.
I, I didn't know how it was left and things.
I believe we did.
Yeah, I think, so, yeah, but I wanted to make sure that he.
So, yeah, we can, that can go back there and if you wanna use it to other maintenance items, that's fine with us.
With a truck accessory you wanted.
Right, that we wanted to put a lift gate on it.
Yeah, once you price it out, and the thing is, if it's a certain amount, you know, you just follow the guidelines for purchasing.
Okay. Um, and the other thing, Lean gave me some information on part of the question I had about budgets. Uh, how are we running budget-wise, as far as plastics?
Just went out, but I think if it's part of your normal budget, you gotta just continue operating to your department, you can't stop your department.
No, no, but I mean, as far as, like, right now, I can hold off on doing certain things, but I don't wanna hold off too far, because we start to get over that pump into late June, July. Now, you're waiting to try and get contractors, cause everybody else is doing the same thing, you know what I mean, so.
Right.
I have stuff that needs to be done, but it's not critical that it be done right now.
I guess if it's part of your maintenance items there and you need to do them part, it, if you're gonna spend the money, it doesn't matter if you spent it now or in December. If it's maintenance items that you need to do for sure this year, just go ahead and do what you need to do. Cause whether it's now or December, I don't think it's gonna affect us too badly.
Okay. And I'm not looking to go on a spending spree, I just wanna do.
Yeah, your maintenance, your maintenance budget's not that big, then I think we need to worry about it, no words.
Yeah, like I said, I just wanna keep moving along with some things.
To me, it's a critical service for the town.
Right.
And, and you gotta be operational. So, do what you have to do to be operational, I think anything good to, you know, that, good to have versus need.
Right, no, 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 like I said, I'm not looking to go on a spree, just keep going so that we're not trying to get everything done at the last minute of the last day of the year, kind of thing.
Are you gonna call G and M Feds, I noticed that was in here too?
Yeah, I don't have his number, if you can get me his number.
I'll do that.
And uh, yeah, it's nothing major, it's just one of them's hanging up for.
I should, I'll call it into you, Lean, if I don't get it to you.
I think it's on the invoice too, we can get it off the invoice.
And some of the rollers? Yeah, what's one, the other ones are working beautiful, just one is hung out.
They came and adjusted them and one's still hanging up, so. Like to get it taken care of for you, cause that's.
We've got an, an actual, I'll let you, I'll link with this, is that a lot of people have given a lot of compliments. You know, the few negatives, the positives have outweighed it, so.
Yeah, I haven't had anybody really complain about it yet or say that, you know, it's an eyesore or anything, so.
No, I mean, it was just, there was some negative publicity on Facebook kind of thing.
Oh, was there, yeah.
But, other than that, it's, most all of it's been.
So, one last question, what's, what are people demanding for, like uh, has demo dropped off a little bit or people asking when can drop their refrigerator off?
Uh, they've been asking waste oil, you wanna know when we're gonna start plastics, paper.
Okay.
Um, I, you know, I said, it could be the middle of June, I don't know. I said, everything's, you know, I said, I'm gonna be on the selection.
Not one particular demand item?
No, um, you know, they just ask about freons, they ask about mattresses, um, you know, the stuff that we charge for. Few on tires and pretty much what we've uh, told some of the people, you know, if they, you know, they're asking about it, brought like in a mattress, we'll say, if you wanna rip this thing apart yourself, bring in the pieces, there's no charge, and it goes right in the hopper, you throw it in the hopper, you throw the other piece in the metal, go ahead, go. And we're not handling it, you know, there's no money exchanged and that's. So, and uh, several people have started doing that, which is fine with us, you know, so.
Okay.
If they're asking, you're what I'd option.
Those uh, emails really help us during the middle of the week, so that, I'd like you to keep that going if you can. And we appreciate all the crew down there, that's a big help.
I'll pass that on to him. You could use a little pick-me-up every now and then.
Yeah. Okay.
Why, why, can I break, when you talk about concrete solid waste, audit update, since Woody's here?
Oh, yeah, I guess we can, that's down the bottom here. Have you read this audit report from Concrete Solid Waste?
I mean, I think I have a copy.
Well, you do now.
It usually, it usually, it usually goes, well, it usually goes to the chairman of the SLACMAN, which was not getting mailed to this building, but is being delivered by the uh, carrier, and then I thought you got a copy of it, but you don't?
I don't think I ever have a copy.
Do you wanna take this uh, copy here and review it, when you're done with it, I guess, just give it back to Lean for our files?
Okay.
That be okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't you grab that, because we had that on here. And uh, I reviewed it quickly, but obviously, you're gonna be able have a lot more on related to the subject. Thanks for reminding me, Mike. Okay, um, we have an email here, going back and forth with the chief, talking about people being bullied by residents down at the transfer station. We wanted to table this until we work on our personnel plan. And what we're gonna do is look into how the general public affects our own workers and our policies on that. Most of our bullying policy was in-house from employee to employee or supervisor to employee. And until this situation arose, we didn't really talk about how the public could possibly affect an employee, so uh, would we review our plan there? Um, I'd like to look at that. And look into the legal aspects of it, there may be nothing that is allowable. But the chief is gonna help us look into that as well and uh, we'll get some guidelines into that and see. That way, there when the police do go down, they can have uh, other than criminal threatening, they, they might be able to have some other tools that they're, that they're use. So, unfortunately, this situation, hopefully Knockon Wood will be over by the time we look at that, but nonetheless, we are looking at that, so. We don't take it lightly. That's it for mailbox items, um, that I had. And let's go to public comment for anybody in the room to start with.
First, I got a couple of things, one is, um, I had an issue, it came up again, I spoke to the board earlier about it, earlier in the year. It came up again and the chair of the board jumped right on, so I appreciate that, that was.
Okay, I have that on the agenda to speak about a little later.
Okay, well, then the, the other part of that was, um, that I haven't seen any activity on the power lines as far as repairs or anything, but I certainly hear the bikes a lot. So, I mean, you know, I don't know if they're planning on just overlooking that or not, cause it might be something that you have to.
I have that guy's card on the agenda tonight too.
Okay, all right, so. And then the other thing you brought up tonight, uh, through the uh, the planning, I mean, the building department was, um, Tenny Hill Road, the cleanup. And I gotta say, I happened to go by there the other day and it's, he's doing a good job.
He is, I'm pretty.
Yeah, he's doing a very good job.
They said he was very responsive, so that was nice to see, that we didn't get any complaints.
You mentioned it tonight and I was, I was, you know, thought about that, I said, hey, and the, uh, the neighbor came over for a visit, a surprise visit one evening, late at night, we sat on the porch and he talked, he's talked about re, uh, starting his, his addition.
Yeah.
And he said, uh, he spoke to me, like, he was apologizing how it was a mess out there and everything and I was like, hey, he thought I had the Christmas trees there so I wouldn't see it, and I told him, that's my dust break. Otherwise, I had all that dust on my house. I said, we haven't complained in years, so, but he's cleaning it up, he's very uh, courteous about it, so. When you mentioned it today, I was like, yeah, he's doing a real good job, huh?
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, when I was on my way here, there was a trailer pulling in there, an empty trailer pulling in. So, but he's doing a good job, I want, what's that?
Maybe one more vehicle.
There aren't many left.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised to see it all cleaned up, he did a good job, so, you know, I, again, thank you guys and thank the board. I mean, whoever wrote that note must've got hammered it in, because it's working.
Well, that's good.
But Mike, I think Mike in the building department did deserve some kudos, cause he's been handling it very well.
He does very well with code enforcement in that department.
He doesn't go along with the, with carrying a big heavy stick. Talks to him first.
Yeah, right.
Treats be reasonable.
Well, he's got a smile on his face all the time, so that helps, you know?
You have anything else, Woody, for us?
Other than, um, just when you contact Mike, there's still quite a bit of leaves around that. In that air conditioner, you and I clean the leaves out more, there's leaves up in there and then.
I did notice that, we did call Mike last fall about that, Lean, I think eventually got him out of there, but.
And over on the firehouse side of the pond.
Yeah.
All the grounds rippled up from winter, that's, nothing's been done there either. Just something for him to think about.
Okay.
Like on both sides of the fire station there.
I'm gonna bring it back to the board now, Mike.
I'd just like to, um, if you saw any of your emails, Sergeant Berman did a great job handing out a complaint about shooting at Moose Hill area in town.
I didn't get a cut from that email.
I don't recall seeing it myself.
Okay, then I will forward to you all, I just thought he did a great job.
You're the police, Lys, I'm like, you're supposed to be sending this.
Well, I mean, that's why I'm gonna report it, basically it was a complaint about shooting.
Yeah.
Uh, he investigated it, talked to a state attorney about it and uh, looked at even things from noise complaints, it was during the day. He handled it very well, investigated thoroughly, and got back to the resident and gave feedback to the resident, so I think he did.
Where was that one, Mike?
Moose, Moose Point, yeah.
Off a flip on fires.
So, he did a great job from, uh, from the beginning, taking the complaint, following through the complaint, and then getting back to the complaint, the person who complained, to make sure he got appropriate feedback. So, I pass that to the chief, that he did a great job, and I'll make sure you get a copy of the emails that he sent out. I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought it was everyone, I apologize. And um, I had a meeting, a virtual meeting this week, uh, last week with the solar, I mean, with the uh, uh, energy committee. Interesting, it was an interesting group.
Do you Zoom?
Uh, not Zoom, a web meeting, a GoToMeeting or something like that. No, GoToMeeting, it was a separate, separate party, it worked pretty well for the most part. And one thing I did wanna report, remember those uh, solar panels that were malfunctioning?
Yeah.
Where they can monitor each panel, and they've been replaced already.
Great.
And uh, so, um, um, he's, they were very excited that we're actually made fifty dollars one month. And uh, but the thing is, the real savings, the real money will come when we own the, basically, it's offsetting what we're using, but the thing is, we're still only leasing at this point. And once our lease payment's stopped, the gravy comes in.
Yes.
Can I just speak on that subject? Um, I've been working with Dana to, to coordinate the merging of our accounts.
Yes.
Spoke to the individual from the solar division, the revenue through Eversource. And he did, um, apply, we had four hundred and forty-four dollars credit on the transfer station, the electric bill. It, it was enough to cover the entire month of May for the police department, which was three hundred and something dollars. And then the remaining hundred and twenty-five got applied to the town office, so we only have a fifty dollar bill this month. But going forward now, that credit, and it will pay off that transfer station, then it will be applied to the other buildings, and so.
Okay, that'll make it much easier for us to monitor. And are they doing the bills all on a single bill, so we get them all at one time?
It'll be in a single bill, but it'll be identified separately with the kilowatts and everything.
It'll be so much easier for us to track than getting them at different times.
And the chair of the committee said, you know, it's, it's gonna be nice to see it after a year.
Right.
And he said, after a few months, it's nice, but things is, the full year will show how we're doing.
I didn't wanna boast too soon, but make sure, see how we make out.
And that's all I have for now.
Okay, Bob?
Well, I did the one, uh, cause I wanted to get an estimate of what the concrete would cost.
Well, I did the one, 'cause I wanted to get an estimate of what the concrete would cost in front of the town hall.
Yep.
This is just an estimate that we can use, have an idea of what it would entail. So I called the Russell Aventure, they're booked, they haven't even got time to look at anything. We're friends with the Sperrys, so he's not in business, but his son's running the business. So we'll see if they can come out and give us, I just want a number that we can play with, you know, before we put it out to bed, at least we know the kinda bite we're getting into.
Right, right.
So.
And again, that's, that's a project we hope to work on next year, but if we start on it now, we'll know better where we're at.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, is, you know, and I was trying to look now where, you know, you'd think that some of the stuff is slow, but some of these guys are still busy.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that might, it'll be a two-step where we have one company come and demo it and we have another company come to install.
But you might find that you, you may get that all done through one entity, you know. I know the Leventures have the ability to do that.
Yeah.
'Cause they've shored up where they've done work down below, you know, but unfortunately, you can't get a number from them, so. 'Cause then you'd have a true picture, you know. So I'm gonna, just gonna work on that through December, see if I can get somebody that is just looking for something to give us a number. Now, it might be low, but at least we'll have an idea of.
I do have another company too, I'll call and give you the name of, okay? Okay, that's great. But before I let you go, Lean, I'm not gonna forget about you this week. As Lee had said, Mike and I got a call after the last storm and went down to Tenny Hill Road and looked at the water rolling into the residence driveway down there. I happened to be going by the town on my way to look at it and Jeff happened to be here. So I swung around and asked if he had a few minutes to ride down there with me. And I'm glad he did because we had two issues that you had brought up, Lee. One was the water coming down and washing into the brook from National Grid, from the power line, and they happened to be working there that day. And one of the grid representatives was there.
That's why you got a card.
And he was a little standoffish to start and then Jeff gave some background that they had done these repairs in the past because a dam had gone out and by reworking it, they would be reworking their work, not something new. He first was, you know, very standoffish, you know, this has to go to DS and here and there and everywhere before this could get done or started and Jeff settled him down and when we left, he seemed to have a good rapport with them and I'm gonna leave this card with you to have it on file. So if we don't see some action here, we can, we can follow up with them on it. So we were lucky to meet that rep at the same time. And we looked at several options. The driveways, as you're looking out towards 13, the driveways on the left side of the road are up in a much higher grade than the driveways on the lower side. And it's hard to regrade the road down without leaving a larger drop on that side. But this side could be lifted up substantially, 'cause the bank is up higher. So Jeff and I talked about that and he said it was nothing that he could get to right away, but he would put it on his schedule to try and regrade that road slightly to pitch the water away from those driveways. So it was nice after we went around and around about it, looking at culvert ideas and he said the same thing about the culvert, the oak leaves are so heavy on the side of the road, it would just fill right back up again. And apparently, previous road agents had talked about that, so. I felt that it was very productive between meeting National Grid out there and meeting Jeff on the way. You know, I called Mike and gave him a report that I met Jeff out there and, you know, we seem to be on the same page to start with. We'll see how the construction through the summer goes and then he gets to it, but at least if it gets on a sheet of paper saying you're on the list, that's the start, as we all know.
I will bark again if it happens, if it's happening, I'll tell you.
Right, right.
I appreciate what, how, the thing is, you know, you couldn't want to bob too, but the thing is, you avoid the any perception of conflict of interest, so how was, I sleep you off? Bob, you would've been called too, but the thing is, just the perception of conflict of interest, 'cause I thought it was very appropriate. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, didn't need to start, you know.
Controversy. Thank you.
Okay, so the selected, with that are done, I just wanted to leave, you have anything for the board?
I just have a non-public request for the board. I'd like to speak to you on that. But on another note as well, the first submitted for our go-for-COVID reimbursement is in the amount of $2,478.3. I'll be submitting that tomorrow and then.
How much was it again?
That's including the additional tonnage that we calculated from MSW.
We know that's been approved, pre-approved for additional tonnage?
No, that's where I'm going now, is I'm submitting the different parts, but I wanna make sure, I have to read through, make sure I don't have to submit my tallies, my spreadsheets to them, 'cause I've got the three different.
You've got documentation to show it.
So some items may get bumped back and say we need more paperwork or review.
Yeah.
But this is our first go-round to get some of that $68,000 back and we'll track it as we go through the summer as best we can and.
Other than that, is a lot of it PPE?
Police department for the first two months came up with just a little over $1,000 and then unfortunately, a lot more expenses got ramped up in the month of May, so we'll get another round of.
No, the thing is, I think, you know, PPE may be required for several more months.
Right. And they're still hard to come by, huh? Their orders are still backward.
Okay, at this point, I won't close the public meeting, only in case we need to make a motion when we come out of non-public, but what do we get, a motion to go into non-public, Mike?
I'll make a motion to go into non-public for RSA 91-Alpha, semi-colon, 3, paragraph.